All right, we will go ahead and get this meeting going. The Marquette City Planning meeting at six o'clock November twelfth. We'll begin with roll call. We'll start with Mr. Primo, please.
Mr. Primo here.
Our trainer here. Christine Graeger here.
Kevin Clay here.
Allison here.
I'll take this one here.
Steve Murray here.
And Sarah Milbel was here. Your motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that up.
All in favor? All in favor? All right, three passes. Minutes from October first meeting. Any comments, questions, edits we need to be done? If you have a chance to review those, otherwise by consensus, we rework them these minutes. Okay, excellent. Any conflicts of interest that anyone needs to report tonight? About anything on our agenda? I would say none. Let's begin. There are no public hearings tonight. First agenda item, second agenda item. Are there any citizens wishing to address the commission on any of our agenda items tonight? Now would be a chance to come to the podium. Please say your name, your address, and about three minutes to provide any information you'd like about anything on our agenda tonight. Okay, we have no old business, so we will move right into our new business. This is sixteen SPR eleven twenty-four at four oh one East Fair Avenue site plan for the YMCA expansion. It's our first item of new business. At this point, I will hand it over to city staff to do the overview of the project.
Okay. Staff has reviewed both site plans for the construction of a two-story addition. In this site plan packet, there was option one, that was plus or minus fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, or option two, which is plus or minus nineteen thousand three hundred square feet. And site improvements for four oh one East Fair and fourteen point nine street to provide comments regarding the plan. And that was in the attached staff report. And showing on screen. And also attached was the application submitted. And planning sheet sheets. The area map, the parcel here is outlined in blue. You can see the lease area here is outlined in green. The block map, again, the parcel, the city's parcel, outlined in blue, with the wise lease area is outlined in the color. Photos of the entire site. And then the site plan set. Do you guys have any questions for staff?
Any questions for the podium? Mr. Murray?
As far as the options of approving something that allows them to build either option, and then make their decision what's being approved.
That was correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? Yeah, Mr. Primo.
You refer to it as a two-story? But it's just a tall building, right?
I agree more to, because imagine being in there mechanical, but I classify it probably to more one-story.
Question? Okay, we will have a duty for commission discussion, but at this point, I'd like to call the applicant to come to the podium and give us a quick kind of overview of the project and perhaps talk a little bit about some of the things that we need to use.
Andrew Panfield, ten twenty-one East Fair Avenue, our West Fair Avenue, IDIAs.
Travis August, IDIAs as well, and also my C four members.
Yeah, as city staff said, we're promoting a building addition on the west side of the existing YMCA, which is in the parking lot, which is the lease area. An expanded chin area with electric pay and everything. Other work in part of the project is parking lot improvements as required to construct our building and tie the parking lot back in, as well as some modifications to the existing storm service system on the site to accommodate the building.
Any questions? Would you mind telling us a little bit about, I think we saw pickleball courts, which is maybe will be thrilling to hear if we find a way to pickleball courts. Could you talk a little bit more about what the answer is?
I'll cover the interior. So with the, both the base bed and the alternate, with just the base bed, it's kind of been split up. Turb, as Andrew mentioned, is a turb area, so it's about a cage, it's potential for youth soccer, like football, that sort of thing. And then there's a rubber, basically rubber sports flooring on the opposite half. You can see there are three, three pickleball courts side by side with that. So being a little, right now, they, they existing, they just use for pickleball at the moment. So it's got to kind of alleviate and allow the, the existing gym. We use better utilize this for passing ball or more of a traditional gym. So there are, from a programming standpoint, with the, with the, the bid alternate as well, that would just be an extension of additional turf, I think, the city in general is, just for evidence, wire numbers, middle leagues, whatever, and soccer, there's a lot of those are taking lack of space for indoor, especially because being up here tiny door, winter states where, you know, winter dining and that sort of thing for those things. So the option could be bigger, but we've got, we've got to work with them. A few years, they, they probably, well, this location of this addition is similar to what it was previously when we had a gym addition planned for it. But this, the use of this on is more of a clubhouse type building versus a basketball. And space for gymnastics, and it's really flexible from a standpoint of what the bigger space can be used for. A lot of it more programming for the launch.
Thank you. Would anyone like to ask any questions to applicant at this point? We're good, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, we're, let's see, correspondence in the packet, but do we receive any correspondence? No correspondence to send for any issue? Oh, great, okay. Would anyone from the public like to discuss, add to, or provide feedback on this? Now, I have a public comment on this particular project. Okay, seeing none, we will now move to commission discussion. Any commissioners have any comments, thoughts?
Kate was excited about the people who were.
Okay, I know, I was like, you can fast, we put in our master plan and then whoop, it happens. Uh, can I get Mr. Murray?
Well, I fully agree with the concerns of supporting Kevin Panfield's level practice, that really we need to plan the whole site. Where just the awareness of the, in terms of the lease agreement, we don't have that option in this case. So I don't know whether we can actually require anything more of the why as part of the session. And we are unable to actually require the city to make improvements to the parking lot. But I would like to attach a strong recommendation to the city to redesign your parking lot. Necessary improvements, there's definitely a traffic flow problem on there, there's definitely pedestrian safety problem. And there's also a capacity problem. The arena was constructed, as I said before, there was one addition called the parking lot constructed a year or bit after that. This is the reason to, the why. By letting, because of the inclusion to the parking area, skating park, it's an inclusion to, it was designated school storage. So I think what may have been an adequate parking lot to begin with is just a little payout, a little payout. Anybody who's out there for a close barbecue this past summer, it was a true mess, traffic wise. It was traffic back at holiday along Main Street Fair Avenue and all the, the triple parking lot.
Very well.
Yeah, please come to the podium so we can get it on.
Sorry, we did, Kevin, the CEO, and I did sit down with city staff, and he's kind of, and Andrew, and back and forth with him as well. So that's something we're trying to work with then. So the bid for this project is obviously we're wanting to see fair or coordinate with the city for time. Address the, probably more so the safety issues with the parking lot. And obviously the safety, layout, and additional spaces, that would be, that's all. Sorry, we're trying to, uh, line.
That's what I think. And all of those, that's what I think, Steve. At least three different arena managers repeatedly submitted budget requests to any figure in the, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the. I doubt they probably had the same request, for sure.
Maybe, Dave, I could ask, make your manager a couple of it. I saw at the beginning of the packet, it said that the parking wasn't something that we were, at this stage, we can really require to review.
Changing the layout of the access points, changing the layout of some of the locker even if they want to increase parking here. And maybe even making it look a little better. Increase on the locker area as well. And so there's a variety of things to see if they really want to take a deep dive into that and hopefully find money here.
No way is my comment, I think this is a great thing to do. My comment would just because our parking ordinance is, in my opinion, screwed up.
Yeah, any other comments? Maybe we should turn to section fifty-four dot one four oh two E. It's in our packet, the site plan review standards. Just kind of looking through basic. Any voting criteria here? So I mean, public health, safety and welfare. Do you have any issues with this proposed project? I mean, some of the parking stuff maybe, but again, we're not talking about that right now. So just billing, asking them what we're allowed to kind of review this. Not public health, safety and welfare?
It's an improvement of the public health.
Right, yeah, we're pickable. Okay, uh, safe and efficient traffic operations. Again, like based on what we're reviewing tonight, have you thought on that? Are you good with that? Uh, safe and so, okay. Anything? Just sort of by impact as we're reviewing that standard? Okay, singular pedestrian circulation. Does some like concrete sidewalks or north and west side. I do notice I sometimes see kids like running over to the skate park. I mean, I kind of thought of the purpose of this, but I do agree with Commissioner Lawrence. The site in general probably need a little attention in terms of pedestrian use. And parking and traffic as well. But again, kind of out of the scope of what we're reviewing tonight. Any thoughts on that one? Okay, topography and landscaping. Any thoughts on that? You have it back, these criteria? Okay, stormwater management. One question I have for staff about that was you were talking about like moving the drainage. What if projects that is besotted to the same, same stormwater. The person who is required to be managed on site?
Except this one because it's entirely paved in this area. They're actually adding rain space. They need to have more required rain space. So they're bringing safety.
Great, uh, emergency vehicle access? Outdoor storage, loading and unloading areas. There's no dumpsters. Okay, lighting. Sample documentation of the lighting plan to do your thoughts on that. It seems like it's all downward facing to me. Like the next guy initiative, so. Thoughts on that? Location of building entrances. Thoughts on that one? Good. Okay, uh, nuisances. For safety, creating any kind of nuisance in that area? Okay, um, and the final standard here, engineering, design, construction standards. Obviously, the City of Marquette's engineering department will be in fashion house. I mean, nothing to joke about us. Okay, all right. Is there any other final discussion about this or would anyone like to make a motion? Now, let's see, Commissioner Lawrence got a comment?
Well, I was gonna make a motion.
I'll second it. I'll be happy to.
After review of the site plan and supplemental documentation dated September thirty, twenty twenty-four, in the staff report for sixteen dash SPR dash eleven dash twenty-four, planning commission requires substantial compliance with the Seaver Development Code. Site plan review standards of section fifty-four point two E. Hereby accrues the site plan as presented with a strong recommendation that the City of Marquette promptly can be redesigned improvements of parking facilities on the adjacent like the arena site to improve traffic flow and street safety. And that the city pursue an overall parking agreement with Florida Michigan University to address parking capacity issues.
I'll be seconded. All right, all in favor?
All right.
Any votes? All right, so motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on, um, the next item of new business is just our schedule for twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-five proposed meeting dates. We need to review those or just write those, put them on our calendar? No, you do need to review them. More change. That's on page fifty-nine. Anybody see any glaring issues? Fifty-nine, I said. It's on page fifty-nine. Takes me about a scroll here. Yeah. Thank you for waiting. July one, I don't know when the fourth of July will be. So we're still doing the two of states. Yeah, two states. Anybody see any issues or create anything? All right. Need a motion. Oh, we do need that. Okay, is there a motion to approve the planning motion dates for twenty twenty-five?
I have to make a motion to approve the planning mission dates for twenty twenty-five.
Commissioner Plague, if there are second, second, or greater, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. We've got work to do. Okay, um, let's see. All right, now we're on agenda five. Citizens wishing to address the commission on any non-agenda items, please. So the podium, state name, address.
Everybody, my name's Jane Pittkin. I live at two two six West Hewitt in Marquette. Um, I want to comment today on the city's current restrictive code for intentional community dwellings or housing cooperatives. Um, a housing cooperative can be functionally the same as a housing rental with the exception that it generally does not profit the landlord. Um, uh, housing cooperatives can be family style living spaces with a mission and community aspect or private apartment complexes with very few noticeable differences from a traditional rental. However, because cooperatives remove the landlord from the equation and are instead managed by the tenants in organizational structure, they're a very effective tool to achieve more affordable housing in our community. Currently, to my knowledge, the City of Marquette has one housing cooperative, the Marquette Climbers Co-op on Fourth Street, which I have the pleasure of living at for over two years, ending late last year. This house presents a beautiful example of what collaboration in community can accomplish while providing a low cost, flexible housing option for folks. The MCC has been around for twelve years now and it's because of the MCC and its previous members that co-ops are legal in Marquette at all. However, we often wondered why more housing co-ops haven't popped up since our establishment of ours. After looking into the city's regulations for what you guys call an intentional community dwelling, we figured out why there aren't more co-ops. First, the land development code requires a special use permit for a building in Marquette to be converted into a housing co-op. As you know, that requires site plan review, uh, which requires a survey of the property, which ends up being a major cost prohibitor for, to any regular person or group trying to establish a housing cooperative. A group currently interested in converting their house into a co-op is running into this issue with survey costs alone running about thirty thousand dollars. Um, second, the requirements for intentional dwelling communities require at least fifteen hundred, a fifteen hundred foot barrier of separation or a major physical barrier between two housing cooperatives. This prevents two houses across the street from each other or on the same block from becoming sources of ten and own cooperative housing. Why are these regulations so restrictive? I understand the city's sentiment from years ago as trying to prevent frat houses from taking over to, in response to the definition of intentional dwelling communities. However, I do not see this as a reasonable concern given the lack of great life at N U and that kind of sentiment. Um, you hear that people ask for affordable housing, yet, um, your online use codes encourage housing for profit while heavily restricting housing for people. I hope people take this comment and be motivated to at least look at and hopefully implement changes which will benefit your residents and help our community thrive. I'd be happy to have further conversations about this and I'm welcome to respond to them if you're ready.
Anyone else for public comments?
My name is Alex Conklin. I live at Fort Tann at East Ridge, apartment two E, the big piece of that being two E. Um, I, uh, had spoken to Jane earlier, knowing that she's going to make a public comment about cooperative housing in Marquette. We were trying to establish a co-op, um, early in the year at Fort Tann East Ridge. Unfortunately, our building has sold. Um, we did find that this code that the city has on intentional, intentional communities was, um, kind of a barrier for us. Um, we were trying to establish a co-op, just having a nonprofit in the building instead of a landlord. No differences to the property, no differences to the neighbors. It was all of us trying to band together and stay in the community, not push down. So, um, currently though, the building has sold. We are all losing our housing around Fort Tann East Ridge. We're forced to go somewhere else, find other rentals, and our neighborhood structure is no more there. So I would love to see the code be changed in the future to help accommodate residents and also make cooperative housing for people like us that don't want to change our buildings, don't want to change our neighbors, just want to stay members of the community. And that is a way that we could potentially, um, have a stake and have ownership of this as community members. Um, you know, and having said that, it would be great to see something in the future that might be a code to help restrict the sale of multifamily housing units till a person turn into a single family home. Because currently thirteen folks are losing their house and it's to be replaced by one. So, thank you.
What do you want else to come up for a public comment? Okay, um, well, commission and staff comments will be at the end, so we can address those comments at the end. The next item on our agenda is corresponding representatives from other boards, give the climate adaptation task force in Marquette, one of the twenty-nine learning circles on housing compensation. Uh, David, do you want to give us a little overview on that?
I don't have anything to add really. All the information is there on the material from that particular session or the others. And just to note, the last one is coming up on the fourth of December and that is, um, land use, so. And landowner, so if you can attend that one, try to get to it too. So I'll send you more information on that when it's available.
I don't know if it's any flexibility, but I know they've been standing up because they lost a lot of teaching time, so that's prohibited anybody who's in education pretending to be saying so. And I think working in the community. I know you can't. Any thoughts on that?
I, I intended the last one and it comes and said that most of December was scheduled to be the last one. There are plans in the works to, like, probably spend another three more sessions on topics that have been presented. For yet, they are looking at.
Any thoughts or comments on what was provided in Marquette? Okay, well, I'm moving on. We have no training session, we have no work session, um, reports, ordinances. So we will move to the commission's staff comment. We'll start with you, Commissioner Primo, if you have any comments.
Yeah, I do it as simple. I think our parking ordinance, we cut back on parking. Look back, I've been working with the city since nineteen fifty-nine. And I've done a lot of things around that. I currently own a couple of apartment buildings. And like a two bedroom apartment. We've got way too little parking allowed. I think the people should be allowed to have as much parking as they need necessary for their humans, not dictated by the city. But I think we're trying to cut back on these large parking lots. But there's a project right now that I'm working on, which of course is owned by the people that were here before you ever came here. It's a Native American project. Uh, most of the people who would be here are women of the Native Americans that fed them. They're not allowed to have, complete their project because as soon as they say they don't have enough parking. Then how much parking do they really need? I think you should look at how much parking somebody needs. And not come up with a set program for all parking. It just doesn't make sense. Because like a two bedroom apartment, normally there's a man of life living there or two people, at least at each drive a vehicle. We don't provide enough parking for that. If somebody wanted to have that parking, it wouldn't be allowed because of COVID. And there's many businesses, I mean, the, uh, Native Americans are doing the same thing in a rental building right now. Not quite as elaborate. But they have literally one parking space. I just, I think our parking should have been, should be left up to what individuals need. For example, the, uh, industrial, are they industrial, they're gonna put the new medical thing out there off of Division Street. And we said you can't have enough parking for your employees. Doesn't make sense. Maybe Steve remembers back when the foot dial was operating, three, four hundred people. Fifty's, they don't have a parking lot that probably held thirty, forty cars. Because nobody drove the word, they walked the word. Doesn't happen anymore. That's, that's my comment. I just think parking should be what you need and not what is being paid. That's it.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Primo?
Um, I'd like to thank you both for coming in to speak about the cooperative. Thank you, you're appreciated. Hopefully we can help us.
Yes, thank you for your, um, public comments. This is thank you for your, like.
Uh, if you'd be, if you'd like to speak, I just think, I mean, um, in progress about the. The cousin co-op, that's a great idea.
Uh, thank you all for welcoming me to be on that. I just welcome Alex to this commission and congratulate Commissioner Papi for his new position. We have thanked him for his contributions, obviously, to the commission.
Thank you, Alex. And thank you everyone else for your continued service. Both take a lot of bond and to work on this board. I really appreciate working with such a great group of people. So thank you everyone and thank you for telling us about what's going on, um, with intentional communities. Actually, a student right now is doing a research project on zoning and policy that Detroit, Perry, Detroit versus, um, LA and Minneapolis, four cities, and looking at what other larger cities have dealt with gentrification and what planning commissions can do to address, um, the displacement of working members of the community for hiring, um, people that live into the area. So I think your comments were very timely and I think there are things that other cities have been able to implement that I think we as a commission should go and go into and think about what our next steps are in terms of our code and what we can do to try to, um, keep Marquette affordable and keep it, keep people here who, you know, work here and actually live here as well. So, uh, thank you again for coming tonight. I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a good call as we're speaking about what we're doing here.
Yeah, so our, um, twenty eighteen master plan made recommendations on how to bridge the affordability gap in housing. And ever since then, the planning commission has been working on all kinds of measures that have created more options, more flexibility, easier rules. We created the rules for intentional housing for the climbers co-op because there was no framework in place for, to allow for that illegal use at the time. So the city a lot of, created something that made it legal. The planning commission agreed on the standards that were adopted. And just, just to put that, you know, history there, um, you know, the, this. And as well, now, the parking standards that Wayne brought up, I, I don't know, we've, we've amended the land development code. I'm ready to skip this time to work. Next week, we're going to start working on the seventh set of amendments. Just all of those have been comprehensive amendments saved for one. I'm just. We have, just a reminder, we've been tweaking the parking standards every time. Every time we go into that code, we keep changing parking standards. Um, and that. Targeted that for a long time was to create more flexibility, remove the maximums that were, the minimums that were required and replace them with, uh, very low minimums, like for retail offices, only requiring one or two spaces, two spaces, like a shop. And so that's something that definitely you can bring up and are your specific example, Wayne, it'd be good to bring that up and so we can study what the issue is and try to get at it. Because, you know, you didn't mention a specific site and, um, there's always an appeals option or what's built into code now allows for presentation of some kind of data or information that the planning commission can consider to modify the standards. So I, I'm not aware of what we're talking about, but, um, gonna start having fun with another set of amendments next week. Since it's on the agenda, it's already meant. And then we have a, um, city commission joint work session in December. So I'm sure you're all aware at this point, December fourth. Um, and that is mainly intended to ask them, um, or have, you know, basically start a conversation about any specific code issues they might have. And also some other issues I might want to suggest, but we can wait for the next meeting. Or you can consider now, I, I think rezonings, the city might want to consider rezonings and properties. And, um, we have not heard anything from the city commission while they're doing low transit. Because that's really something that they decided that they, manager's office was working on to some extent, but that would be really good again, uh, they, because they just adopted, you know, a new plan that has our ten year old. Where should we get transit roads to that city? And hopefully they have some ideas of how they might be able to do that. Ultimately, you can't do that. The city commission is gonna have to put some weight on that.
Okay, great. And so, um, babe, just to kind of follow up that, did you want us to discuss the joint work session that we made in the next meeting?
Right, probably just think about some things that you might want to have the city, have a discussion with the city commission as well.
Okay, all right, so we'll add that to our agenda for next, for next meeting.
Yeah, and just one more about those cases. The intentional community section of the code is definitely not for fraternity, for sorority. It definitely excludes those. There's a bunch of exclusions to what that means. Those things are dealt with under a different part of the code. So, you guys, that's something, um, you know, another item to add to the list of things that we're working on for the LDC amendments. Check it out, check out the definitions and all the standards in the code. And when Jane said thirty thousand dollars for a survey, we're all looking at it exactly like, it shouldn't cost a tenth of that. Maybe a tenth at, at the most. Depending on site. Fifteen hundred to three thousand dollars.
I have a good friend that's been surveying in Marquette for forty years, probably or more, or five hundred plus.
Yeah.
And he also, well, I don't know how elaborate you get, you got four corners or six corners, whatever you got, that's all that goes in. Oh, complicated when you go.
But I think the big, the bigger point of like, what can we do to try to diversify the housing options of the community? And what can, planning commission within our review, what can we do, I think is a really important point that we should get to.
I'd like a verification of the rich property. If it was just changing ownership to, uh, changing the structure of the building, it wouldn't require a current law. No, I don't think so.
If they're changing it to cooperative, where they do all that, then that changes it.
But.
Nonprofit site to buy a building? And they kept, they were the owners and they were renting it and it wasn't going to go off and they never loaned it.
So it's just like. Eliminate, wreck, destruction. There's a set of standards that are like.
Is an L on ski.
At the time we adopted those standards, I think N R had about seventy-five similar potential. And our standards were very similar. Part of it is, and Marquette's a lot smaller, it's a small community. Doesn't matter, and right at the time.
Okay, and do you have any comments? Okay, so, um, with that, we will wrap up at six forty-six.